Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're doing some neat technology things. One of our members is not here, so we have him kind of listening in, we hope. At this time, could we have for Mr. Weber a roll call, please?
Mr. Demakia, Mr. Fallus, Mr. Smith, present, Mr. Sturgill, Mr. Williams.
Here. At this time, we have a student-led pledge. Mr. Hall?
Thank you. Superintendent Mr. Tucker, Treasurer Mr. Weber, Board President Mr. Williams, and Board members. Tonight, we have Lucas Reinhardt, fourth grade student from Toni Morrison Elementary School, to lead the pledge of allegiance. Lucas is the son of Brian and Susan Reinhardt, and has two sisters, Rachel Shuley, who attends Oberlin College, and Amanda Shuley, who attends Akron University. Lucas enjoys soccer and baseball, and is very focused on his academics. After the pledge, Lucas will speak on teamwork. Ms. Megan Young, principal of Toni Morrison, is here tonight to support our student. Could you stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Hi, my name is Lucas Reinhardt. I go to Toni Morrison Elementary School. I'm going to talk to you about the subject of teamwork. Teamwork is very important, in my point of view. There are many kinds of teams that use teamwork. There are sports teams, of course. A school is also a team. Each individual class in a school is a team, and the whole school system is a team. Teamwork is so important because goals get accomplished that cannot be done just by an individual. The many teams of our school system accomplish the big goal of educating us, the children. This is one of the most important goals for our future, and that's why I feel we're all part of this team. Thank you.
At this time, we'd like for Mr. and Mrs. Lucas, Reinhardt, please stand up, please. We recognize. We thank you for your support and your help as well. Thank you, Lucas. This afternoon, we also have the JROTC will do a POW ceremony and MI missing soldier ceremony for us. At this time, First Sergeant Obichi.
Ladies and gentlemen, honored guests, the Lorraine High School Army Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Honor Guard, under the command of Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Selena Gutierrez, will now present the prisoner of war, missing in action and killed in action ceremony. The members of the Honor Guard are Cadet Captain Amanda Marrero, Cadet Major Tatiana Miranda, Cadet Captain Louis Maldonado, Cadet Command Sergeant Major Trevor Thornhill, and I'm Cadet Captain Samantha Hensley. I have been given the honor and privilege of introducing this table and acknowledging it, representing and paying tribute to all the prisoners of war, missing in action and killed in action, from all American involvement in World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Grenada, the Persian Gulf Desert Storm, Operation Enduring Freedom in Afghanistan, Operation Iraqi Freedom, and more. Many of you have looked at this table and wondered. Let me explain. This table, set for five, symbolizes the frailty the prisoners against their oppressors. Remember, the tablecloth is white, symbolizing the purity of their country's call to arms. Remember, the single candle displayed in the center of the table is symbolic of the families and loved ones who kept the faith, waiting for the return of those so dear to them. Remember, the red ribbon tied so promptly on the candle is reminiscent of the red ribbon worn upon the lapels and breasts of many thousands who bear witness to their unyielding determination to demand a proper accounting of our missing and the return of all Americans left on foreign soil. Remember, the lemon on the bread plate reminds us of their bitter fate. Remember, there is salt on the bread plate, symbolic of the tears of the families as they still wait for their loved ones to return. Remember, the glasses are inverted, they cannot toast with us this evening. Remember, the chairs are empty, they are not here. Remember, all of you who have served with them and called them brothers and sisters who depended upon their might and aid and relied upon them. Remember them, for surely they have not forgotten you. Good evening, veterans. Superintendent Mr. Tucker, Board President Mr. Williams, Board members, Mr. Weber, families, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Cadet Captain Samantha Hensley, on behalf of our Superintendent Mr. Tucker, our Principal Ms. Diane Connebar, and the Lorraine High School Army Junior ROTC Honor Guard. Under the direction of First Sergeant Sam Obichi, we would like to thank Dr. David Hall for inviting us to this board meeting and honoring our veterans. Sunday, November 11th, Veterans Day, a special day our nation has set aside to honor all those who have served and those who are still serving our nation's armed forces in defending our freedom. American revolutionary Thomas Paine wrote in his pamphlet, "Common Sense: It is not in numbers but in unity that our great strength lies." Those words are as true today as they were in 1776. The unity that is America springs from one cause, freedom. Generation after generation, Americans have stepped forward to defend our freedom and to preserve the founding principles of this great nation. From Valley Forge to Vietnam, from Kuwait to Kandahar, from Berlin to Baghdad, these patriots have stood watch over America's peace, and when necessary, they have borne the cost of our nation's wars. There are more than 24 million living veterans. They are among our nation's finest citizens. They served our country and continue to care for our veterans and our community. Throughout our presentation, we honor all the veterans for their solemn pledge to defend our freedom. We thank them and their families for their example of service, personal courage, and sacrifice. We pledge to uphold their legacy by teaching younger generations about their role in securing the blessing of liberty and about how the veterans' courage and sacrifice has shaped our nation's history. In addition, we would like to thank and remember the United States Armed Forces and their families for their dedication, sacrifice, and service to our country. Let us remember those deployed on foreign soil in harm's way, standing watch on point for our nation around the world. Please pray for our service men and women for their safe return home and to continue to support them in their mission in protecting our nation's freedom. This concludes our presentation. Again, thank you for inviting us. Enjoy your evening. Have a safe return home. God bless America, and let us never forget.
I'd like to thank our JROTC for outstanding ceremony. And it's time I turn over Mr. Tucker for our Veterans Day presentation.
Every year, we honor our veterans on Veterans Day, and a number of students have gone on, graduates and people who attend Lorraine Schools have served our armed forces. I've played in a number of ceremonies over a number of years, and it's always refreshing what we do. So tonight, what we'd like to do is have our veterans that are here tonight to please And could we acknowledge those veterans, please? I was asked to make short remarks, and I'm not going to because the ROTC said it all. We have acknowledgements from the Board of Education and certificates for you honoring your years of service for us. We'd like to thank you for coming and being honored here tonight. Thank you.
At this stage, I need a motion to approve, or excuse me, I'm sorry. This is the stage where we'd have our first hearing of the public. Just so you know, there is a second hearing of the public later in the agenda, which might be easier for you to respond to what's been discussed. But if you would like to take the opportunity to address the board prior to discussion, you're welcome to do so at this time. Thank you. If we could have a motion to amend or approve signed minutes of the regular board meeting held on October 25th, 2012.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
At this time, is there any old business? Okay, just for information, prior to going into the report and recommendations of the treasurer and of the superintendent, there are some specific agenda items that we will discuss, but based on, first, procedural matters and kind of a value issue, there will not be any action taken on some of those. Procedurally speaking, for some of these things, we need a majority of the board, not a majority of who's present. And then, from a value statement, especially on very sensitive items, we would like if we never have to move forward with only three board members making certain decisions. We would not do that. It's very much a part of our whole, only three. So for those two reasons, certain issues, there will be no recommendations for action taken on this evening. But there is vital conversation and discussion that we will have that will help shed some, I think, understanding of some of the things that we're approaching. So with that said, Mr. Weber, if we could have your report and recommendation, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. On the docket for me this evening is items one through five. I'm going to pull item two for approval, and we'll do that probably next week or whatnot. But at least we can discuss item two, which is the financial recovery plan. We get to that a bit later in the presentation here.
Excuse me, Mr. Weber.
Yeah.
We're having a little bit of difficulty hearing you. Can we try and maybe increase the volume just a bit? I can hear my fine.
How's the audience? Can you hear? Okay.
Okay.
All right, it's just...
I'm going to pull item two off the list for approval, but hopefully we can discuss it this evening. Item one is the five-year forecast, which the Boards of Education had to submit in October. This will be the formal approval of the five-year forecast. It shows a $4.8 million deficit this year, $11 million deficit next year. Item three is a new accounting fund that relates to our construction project. It's a formality to set that up for our LFI. Item four are donations. And item five is a procedural matter of, there are certain things we have to do for the Lorraine Public Library, and this happens to be the approval of the trustee appointments, asking the board to approve those this evening. So my goal here is to ask for approval of items one, three, and four on a separate vote, item five on a separate vote, and then talk about the recovery plan last. Okay?
Is that okay, gentlemen?
Okay, so I submit for approval items one, three, and four.
Motion to approve items one, three, and four.
Support.
Mitch, for your information, in case you can't hear, we have items from your agenda, one, three, and four, which we are now going to vote for approval on, and then we will catch you up on the next piece.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Appreciate it.
Okay, let's turn him down.
Do you turn him down, whatever?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, I submit for approval item five, which is the Lorraine Public Library Board of Trustee Appointments.
Move to approve item five?
Second.
Discussion? Just so everyone understands, part of the responsibility of this board is certain logistical pieces for the library, and one of those is approving board members. And this has been presented to us by that body for our action.
The Lorraine Public Library is what is known as a school board library. We don't run the library, but we are the parent to that board. So as Mr. Williams indicated, when they recommend appointments, we have to approve them. If they need to go on the ballot for tax levy, we have to approve that and put that on the ballot. But other than that, they pretty much run their own, they run their own organization.
With all of that said, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, item two is the discussion about the financial recovery plan. And the financial recovery plan is due to the Ohio Department of Education and is even born because we have a deficit this year, fiscal year '12-'13, and one next year, fiscal year '13-'14. So it's a simple format that looks like the five-year forecast for a couple of years. And with the passage of the new levy last week, still has to be certified, those things now can factor into recovery plan. One of the other options available to school districts is that we can borrow versus that levy. And since we put on the ballot what's called an emergency levy, real estate tax levy, we can borrow up to 100% of the first-year collections, assuming we find a suitable banking institution to do that. So the plan I submitted, or I'm going to ask the board for approval, I guess, next week, would include that borrowing, it's called a TAN, a Tax Anticipation Note, because it anticipates the collections of the levy, which would get us through this year with some other reductions that are in the submission. And then, next year's plan puts us with a positive ending cash balance, but negative after you subtract off what's called encumbrances, which would be the estimating of purchase orders out there. So I know one of the key discussion points might be the borrowing of the money, which I am recommending that we do. Had some long discussions with the Superintendent Mr. Tucker the last couple of weeks on this, and we think that's the proper course of action.
And there will be quite a bit of discussion around this area, which we should have. This is something that we contemplated. When we were knowing that we had a deficit, we were going to have to submit a recovery plan. And we had conversation about a recovery plan that would be with the failing of the levy, and we had the conversation with the passage of the levy also. So these two items are what the superintendent and the treasurer and their staff had to contemplate. They had to basically have two plans prepared. How do we move forward if we didn't pass the levy? How do we move forward if we do pass it? And each of those scenarios created different opportunities, different variables, different challenges. And so it has not been without a lot of thought, but what we need to do is we need to have some discussion about those thoughts so that we can see the wisdom or the preference as to which of these routes we take. Clearly, there is a challenge whenever we're taking on a deficit of interest, and there are some downsides to that, but there are also some advantages to what we have to do in terms of cash flow and what we need to do in terms of moving the district forward and providing services for students. Again, I don't know that there's an absolute right way and a wrong way. There are certain advantages to one path and certain advantages to the other path. And so we're looking forward to hearing even this evening some of the rationale from the superintendent and the treasurer that supports their recommendation for the path that they are going to lead us through. And they are the managers. Their recommendations will be heavily weighted in terms of the decision that we make because of their insight and their knowledge of how the district has to operate. There are many things that we've discussed. I think last year, we had Mr. Harten come in and give us some insight on some of the realities of fiscal emergency, and we've had even recent meetings with the Ohio Department of Education on how those things work. So again, if we could have a little conversation, gentlemen, among those of you who are here, so that we might gain a little bit more understanding of the path that you are recommending and both the upsides and the downsides. I know one of the challenges is we have to make significant cuts into the administrative side of our district. We can't make any more cuts significantly into the program side. And I know, Mr. Tucker, through conversation, there's a plan that you have that's going to address that. I don't know how many specifics we can have at this stage, but so that there is an assurance, we have very specific intentions on making specific cuts in specific areas. And those are going to be led by the superintendent. We are not kicking the can down the road, but we do have an opportunity perhaps to not cut the juggler vein. And so, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Weber, at this stage, if you all would share with us, and then we can have some questions perhaps.
None of the choices are good choices, but they're choices you make. Couple of things that go into a plan. The one thing you do is you call a whole lot of superintendents that have been in fiscal emergency and been out of fiscal emergency. And there's a misnomer out there that there's a quokk state takeover, where they come in and they tell you what to do. They don't do that. They come in and they just tell you what you can't do. We can do that already. The day I started here, and I've said this publicly, it's been in the paper, it's been in my interview, one thing that needs to take place is a total looking at our administrative staff and as known affectionately as Charleston. We currently have probably as many folks there as we have when we had more students that needs to come down. What people don't realize is this district has $30 million in grants, and if I cut all those people, it doesn't matter. That includes teaching staff also on those grants and also some support staff. So the goal is to utilize those grants to our best advantage to get teaching and learning done for students. The other thing people also need to realize is this is a fiscal... Or a physical plant of 14 or 15 facilities. That does take... It's quite a bit, and this is a $90 million operation. So, there is a lot to think about. What you... What needs to occur is, one, what Dale said was the deficit will be changed once the levy is certified. There's a thought that, well, you go to the state and they come in and they loan you the money for three months and it's free or whatever, and that's not the case also. When the state comes in... And we met with Mr. Harden Monday afternoon for a period of time, and we also met with the Auditor of State. We were in Columbus. And had a long discussion with them on our thoughts and where we had been here. And they recommended at this time that you're not at the point to do that. We think we can make some cuts. And we're not talking... The major cuts on the student's side came last year, obviously, before my arrival. But there's a lot of other areas that we can... That can be looked at and some things we need to do. One of the things when you go into the state loan... Well, it's not state loan fund anymore, but when the state comes in, is you lose the freedom to make some decisions. So, what we want to do is, one, we need kindergarten back. It's got to come back. The day... In fact, the night of the levy, I've told my staff, we had done some preliminary work. I need it back by January 1. One, it's good for students. Two, it will break... As students come back to the district, and whether they come back this year or not, we've already gotten a number of phone calls from parents asking when that will be back. So, that will be somewhat of a revenue producer. And usually what happens is when a student leaves, they also take their brothers or sisters with them. But it will stop parents from taking their children next year. We need to get our high school busing back to some degree, to somehow, because with moving the students to the south side and being born and raised in Lorraine, for a lot of folks, it's tough to get to that side of town. We have a number of students that withdrew to went into e-scholes, and that's where they sit home and work on computers. And we followed up with a lot of those, and they say, "You get busing back. I just can't get my child to school." So, with that, will also come some revenue back. There'll be some cost on the busing side. But we're already busing about 400 or 500 students out to there because of what first student has worked with us on. So, it comes down to a choice. And when you talk about the interest that is... That will be paid back, that's the maximum. That's the maximum number. We're hoping to pay a lot back quicker and to get this taken care of. This is more of a cash flow issue for the first year more than anything else, because we don't collect money like everybody else. We collect it at specific times of the year. The problem is we have payroll every two weeks, and we have bills that need to be paid. One thing that we are is fiscally conservative. I'm really on the conservative side of that. And you can ask my staff, because I... We've cut back on a whole lot of things already, some obvious things. But we're working on those. So, you have a choice. When the state comes in, they just don't come in for a year. There's also costs involved with them coming in. A lot of my time and a lot of the Treasurer's time will be just filling out reports. We're currently in academic emergency, and you have no idea the amount of reports that we have to fill out on things that we're already doing. That's just part of the state process. We need an opportunity to pull ourselves out of this, because if we're in it, it could be two, three years. And they will control pretty much our expenditures and a lot of things that may even be revenue producers or getting students back in our district will be something they won't approve. And we've had those conversations with them. Flip side of that, of course, is it's going to cost you to borrow money. Yes, it is. Districts, we are not unique... Lorraine is not unique in this situation. There is a lot of districts facing this situation. And we... This is talking to a lot of folks. This is the opportunity that we have to do that. A lot of the reductions that I'll make come with contracts. And because people in districts have contracts for a certain period of time, and you have to wait for those to end and make reductions. And it isn't like a business where you can reduce at any time. We have a school year, and I have children to think of, and I have programs to think of. And we need to strategically also look at some of the programming that we're offering to make sure that we offer what is in demand and what is appropriate and important for the students. And there are some things that we can put in place and some things we need to do to make things attractive.
Questions, comments, gentlemen, please?
Well, I have some questions and comments, if I might, Mr. President.
Please, yes.
I want to verify some things, Mr. Weber, from the recovery plan and from the five-year forecast. First of all, for the public's knowledge, since 2006, this school district has borrowed $10 million, and we're still broke. If that's not proof that loans don't work, I don't know what is. Right now, Mr. Weber, if I am interpreting, our current payment on the 2000... Then, we borrowed 5.3 million in 2006. We borrowed 4.7 million in 2011. See, am I correct in assuming that the 2006 loan is now paid off?
Correct.
And that we are currently paying $958,000 a year on the 2011 loan?
Correct.
And that has four more years after this year to run?
Sounds right, Mr. Smith, yeah.
And then, if we borrow 3 million more... Now, that $958,000 does not include interest?
Is that what?
Does not include a... Pardon me?
See, it does not include interest.
Correct.
Okay, it does not.
That's principal.
And then, we would add to that, if we paid the loan that we're being recommended to make, that would... If we paid that over five years, I believe that would be $600,000 a year.
That's correct.
So, we would be paying without interest almost a million and a half... Well, over a million and a half dollars a year in loan repayment. Okay. I don't buy into the rationale that because we go... That we shouldn't go into fiscal emergency because it's more work. Now, Mr... If I might, I'd like to listen to you. Mr. Williams and I, a year ago, met with two representatives of Auditor of State Dave Yoast's office in Youngstown. And I came from that meeting with a totally different concept of what the state does and doesn't do. Yes, the state has many powers, but we were told, and correct me if I'm wrong, the state comes in with a cooperative attitude. The first thing that happens is a panel of five people are... Have to be established within 15 days of being declared in fiscal emergency. Yes, two of those members are appointed... Are designees. One of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, better known as the State Superintendent. The other is appointed by the Director of Budget Management. But the majority and the ruling part of that commission are local people. Number one... Yes. One of the three local people must be... Let me repeat, must be, a parent of a child attending Lorraine schools. Number two, another member must have five years' experience in finance or business and live or work in the district. That person is appointed by the Governor. The third local member must also have a five-year experience in business or finance, and that person would be appointed by Mayor Rittenhour. Therefore, the majority of that commission, you know, not people from Columbus, there are people from Lorraine. And I do not believe that they would put the best interests of the state before the best interests of the students. I have great faith in that, and I, as a Board Member, would appreciate another set of eyes. And yes, they can come in and they can wield a big club. They can fire him. They can fire Dale. Unfortunately, they can't fire the Board Members, but they can get some out. I saw that... She told... The women that came up, there were two women, that they have never done that. And I have read through the manual on fiscal emergency many times, and there's some key phrases in there. And one of them is "may." They may choose to use these powers. It doesn't say they have to. Now, once the commission is established, they must, within 120 days, through a cooperative effort between the School Board, the Administration, and this commission, send a recovery plan. Dale, does that go to the Auditor of State?
All the recovery plan, yes, because the Auditor of State has to verify the deficit.
Yeah. No, I'm talking about the recovery plan the commission would do.
I don't think that goes to the Auditor of State, but I'm not really sure, Jim, I don't know.
Well, they have to file it with Columbus.
With the Ohio Department of Education, ODE.
Okay, well, whatever. And there's an interesting thing about that. State law says that if in that commission's recovery plan there is to be a reduction in force, better known as laying people off, that reduction enforced must first begin with administrative and non-teaching positions. That's the law. When we did our reduction plan, and that does not lie on this man's shoulders, he wasn't here, we began on the other end of the equation. We began in the classroom by getting teachers... Waiting teachers off. The state wouldn't have done that. Why wouldn't they have done that? Because the law says they can't. Now, I will close real quickly here. I want to verify two other things with Mr. Weber. Number one, after borrowing $3 million, you are assuming that on June 30th, 2013, we will have a cash balance of $2,383?
We have a cash balance of...
Before... After the...
After encumbrances, two... Yes, $2,383, that's correct. After encumbrances.
And the... So, when you have an $85 million general fund and you're planning for a $2,300 balance, three cold days in February will destroy that with extra higher heating bills. So, is it possible that even by borrowing the money, by June 30th, 2013, we could in fact have a deficit and trigger a takeover? Is that possible, Mr. Weber?
Oh, sure, that's true. It's all possible, yeah, because I agree with you.
And then, next year... Now, one of the things that's confusing, school years run from July through June of the next year.
Right.
We all operate on January through... When you file your income tax, you're filing on a calendar year, January through December. So, we run from July through the next June. Now, there is... And Mr... There's no details in the recovery plan. But am I correct, Mr. Tucker, it's about a $2.1 million reduction in payroll?
Should be, or more.
Yeah, okay. So, even though we are going to reduce or more, but at the $2.1 million level... And I think you said that would be mostly administrative?
Absolutely.
We still end up on June 30th, 2014 with a $1,136,776 deficit. So, as I look at that from a business standpoint, we're doing what a lot of people do that keep digging a hole. We max out our credit card. We borrow money to pay off that credit card, and within 12 months, we've maxed it out again. And the track record in this district is we've borrowed to stay out of the hole in 2006, 2011, and now, we're about to do it again. And I have, based on what I know now, do not intend to support that. So, I think... And there's another advantage of going into the... And I'm again looking at it from a business sense. We would get, if we go into fiscal emergency, the first thing I understand that the Auditor of State has to do is a debt certification audit?
That's correct.
Now, if we're already in... And this comes from Mr. Harden, by the way, the same gentleman they've been talking to. He reminded me that if we go into fiscal emergency and have the audit, the state pays for it. If we have the audit before we're in fiscal emergency, we pay for it. Well, I know what I'd rather do. And once that audit has been certified, then we get what's known as an advance on state funds. Now, the people last year, Tim, if I remember correctly, thought it'd be around $6 million we could get. No interest. At minimum, three years to pay it back. However, Dale, and I don't know if you've discussed this with Mr. Harden, he said that it's still unclear with some of the changes that came in with the Governor's budget, that we could actually have as long as 10 years, but no interest.
Didn't discuss it with him. I mean, the law talks about a two-year payback. He indicated, you know, you might request that, doesn't mean you're going to get it.
Right.
Yeah.
But when I say three years, that's because the year you get the money, there's no payback. Is that correct?
If we got it like, for example, in June of 2013, we wouldn't start paying it back until the next fiscal year, 13, 14.
Well, if we got it in July of 2013, we wouldn't owe anything until when?
Right, but that's the...
July of 20...
Right, 15.
15.
Right. The tricky part is knowing when you're going to go in.
Yeah, I agree.
It gets a little bit...
And the one thing, and I don't know if anybody noticed in Saturday's newspaper, the delinquent taxes were listed. Mr. Weber, in your assumptions here, you're... Are you taking into consideration those delinquent taxes?
Yes, because I bring back... The County Auditor gives you an estimate. I bring that down at least 8%, if not more.
Well, right now, in the Lorraine City Tax District, which is Tax District 42 in the county, I did a rough estimate, there's 500... There's 500... $550,000 of delinquent taxes. And I called Mark Stewart, the Auditor, yesterday to clarify some things. One of them was, why does the city of Lorraine have back income... A property tax? I didn't think cities paid it. Well, in fact, in some cases, they do. But he reminded me of something. He said, "Jim, that list that was in the paper, that's only one-year collection. There are delinquent taxes that are still due for two or three years before that." So, I just wanted to make sure, Dale, that when... I thought you probably had, but I just wanted to make clear that... Make sure that you have taken into consideration those...
Yes, I do.
And the other thing he pointed out, and I don't know if that was clearly presented to the... Because it's an emergency levy, the emergency levy is not built based on millage, it's based on dollars.
Right.
So, if property values go down in future years, the taxes will not go down. The Auditor, without a vote, will increase the millage to the point necessary to collect the 3.1 million that the levy was supposed to collect. The good news is, if we can get things turned around in this area and property values go up, the payments won't go down, but the millage will. Is that right, Dale?
That's correct, with the only caveat being the Auditor can only collect up to the voted rate, which would be 4.8 mills.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And before I know it, there's some specific points that Mr. Tucker will address. Again, the intention of this is, there's a lot of perspective that we need to share with each other and share with you all. Mr. Smith made some very valid points. I've been part of some of those conversations. And those are some of the... I think he highlighted some of the advantages to the emergency. One of the other challenges... One of the other challenges is, when in the emergency, you are forced to, by the commission or by the rules, to place issues on the ballot. And those issues are at the amount of balanced budget. For example, what we did in this levy is we asked not for the amount that we needed to bring us to zero balance. We asked for the amount that we believe that the citizenry would, would provide for us. And again, when you're talking about borrowing $6 million that you have to pay back over at minimum, what would be three years for us, but two years technically, but three years depending on when we make the loan.
Just, please don't use the word "borrow."
Oh, excuse me, advance. That's, that's, and again, that is an advantage. You advance without interest, but you are still in the, in the, the cash flow challenge of paying it back. In other words, though it's no interest, you are still paying back it over a, a short period of time.
A point of order, again, we're not paying anything back. They're, they're reducing payments.
To the, to the point of that, which is going again to impact what our operating budget is.
And how about the $240,000? Is that going to impact anything?
Mr. Smith, this isn't for argument. I did not argue. We're not going to argue.
Why?
We're going to discuss.
I thought we were discussing.
No, no, we're not going to interrupt. We're, just like you had, thank you.
Go right ahead, I apologize.
No apology needed. You're my guy, we're good. The other thing that happens is, it would require us to put millage amounts that would be quite significant. And I don't know exactly what they would be, but to get out of fiscal emergency, you have to pay it back, and you have to show your five-year forecast of solvency. Is that correct, Mr. Weber?
That, that is true, yes.
So, again, Mr. Tucker was accurate when he said, "There is no good choice here." Mr. Smith is accurate when he's making statements that there are some advantages to, to the other scenario. It comes down to, it's going to be a decision made by Mr. Tucker, well, it's going to be made by us, but a recommendation on how we can operate the district. Though we have a deficit, we will never lose focus on what our objective is in terms of the product that we have to produce, in terms of quality education, in terms of programming. We do have a $12 million deficit, and we do have a $90 million budget. We have to deliver our product. So, I don't know that it's going to be a question of who's right and who's wrong. But what we will be able to do is take wisdom from each perspective and try and make it so that if we, if we land in fiscal emergency, which inevitably many of us believe we will, it's also a question of how do we get out of it? And, but the, the, I think the thing that I would say from the, from the board perspective is, the administration will make recommendations. I would like from, and I know, Mr., Mitch, are you over there? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Do you have any comments with, in terms of what you have read and discussed with Mr. Weber and the superintendent, in terms of perspectives on, in your finance guy? And you appreciate, I think, some of these sensitive areas. Can you share anything with us that might just give us more perspective from your point of view?
Um, the thing that I'm concerned about most is, obviously, we need to get in a position where we have cash flows to operate the district. And my perspective is that the voters of Lorraine vote us in to administer the district. So, I would, I would be of the position that we would want to do everything we could to stay out of a fiscal emergency state where we would not have local decision-making authority over Lorraine City Schools.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sturgeon?
My, my only comment is, you know, after listening to everything, everything that's going, and the whole process, it means that we, we'd have to run another levy. We're forced to run another levy if, if they come in. I mean, I, I thought we had to run one every, every time it was possible to run a levy. But we just won the, the first one in 21 years, and I mean, I'm, I'm grateful to the voters for the, the passage of the, of the recent levy. To go back and ask them at this point for more money right away, I don't know how, how that would really go over. I, I would still like to hear, hear Superintendent Tucker's plan on further reductions. And, I mean, we can always, always go into fiscal emergency. I mean, but I, I really don't, you know, I really don't want to. It just doesn't, I, I, I'm the type of person who would just about do anything to stay out of it and, and try to provide the, the services for children that, you know, the best we can.
It sounds so easy, you just go into fiscal emergency and, and, and a lot of your problems are solved. It sounds so easy, you go to the bank, you get money, all your problems are solved. The discussion we had with the state is, they're not even sure we'll qualify for it this year because we, we passed the levy. The good news is you passed the levy. I, I, I feel that's a gift from the citizens, and they expect some certain, certain things from me. I made some statements, then I'm going to follow through on those, and if I don't, then, then it's somebody else. I'm from here, I expect to follow through on those. Mr. Smith made a comment that the state says you cut administrators first. I guarantee you, that's what I'm going to do. I have said that the day I came in here. I have said that at every interview. I have said that, and you can go look on Channel 20, because they run forever and ever and ever. And you also, at my interview, when I interviewed with the board and the community, that was, that was an area of concern, and that, I do plan to do that. But if I could cut 2.5 million out of administration and solve our problem, we'd do it. But, but it's not quite that easy. And even if a commission comes in here, it, they're going, they're going to, they're going to be the same way. It's going to be the same thing. But what we do have is some core things that are important to this community, and I know what those things are important to this community, that, that they want. This ROTC program you saw tonight, how is important to that to this community? Well, maybe we just can't afford that. I, I think we can afford that. There's some other things that we need to look at. There's a number of items. The other thing I, I am planning to do is, once the first of the year comes, is hold some forums with some people and, and let, let them speak to us. And not in schools, they're always in schools, and everybody doesn't like to come to the schools. But go to where the people are, listen to what they have to say. And I know you get little vested interest groups that come in there, but, but you know what? We need, we need to hear from folks, and, and we need to hear what, what they think. And, and go from there. There is no easy solution here. I knew that coming in. I, I was surprised at the levy. There were, the, the good people of Lorraine, and a lot of them couldn't afford it past that levy. And I feel an honor and an obligation to make sure that, that those programs are there and try and give it a shot and make sure that happens. And if it's fiscal emergency, it, like I said, I don't know that we'll qualify this year. We, we may in the future, but I sure would like to give it a try. Got a lot, since '06, I wasn't here in '06 and didn't approve that amount, but, but, some things maybe could have been done, but we'll, we'll have to work on those.
Couple other things, just a couple of comments too I have, is that the, the environment is not static. And the example is, you know, on the, this year's forecast, we're showing, I'll do some rounding, about a $5 million deficit. So, let's say our revenue is 85 million and our expenses is 90 million. That's the five, 85 minus 90 is $5 million in the hole. Well, one of the things we're having a hard time with is that on the student side of the house, students are leaving on the, on the, what's called the ADM, the Average Daily Membership, which is the revenue side of the house, and we're losing money in that area, and we're also losing money on the cost side of the house to the charter schools. So, we're getting double whammied on that. So, if this year's revenue, as an example, was 85 million, next year's revenue might be 84 and a half million, and the following year, 84 million. So, we're losing revenue year by year because students are leaving the area for whatever reason, okay? That's the revenue side of the house. And another thing that's a variable that's going to be in here is, the state of Ohio has what's called a biennium budget. They have a two-year budget. The, at the end of this second year, will, will be June of 2013, the government will have a new two-year budget in July 2013 with new funding issues for schools. I don't know what those are going to be yet. I don't think anybody knows what those are going to be yet. So, those are big variables that could sway this thing by millions of dollars. We just don't know.
Well, again, I mean, we, we know we're in an unstable, unpredictable environment. I think one of the, and we've talked about this a lot, we're excited that in January, we will launch into a strategic plan. That will drive us, one of the reasons we're, where we are, it's not just about money, it's about planning or the lack of planning. It's about the inability or the lack of effort to try and define the future of the district. What do we look like in five years? We spend so much time talking about what we don't have and what happened last year that we haven't took, taken the time to try to create the future. And, and so what happens is, as you said, Mr. Weber, these things change. Well, when they change, we change, because we don't have that, that, that strategic, dynamic plan that keeps us on track. We have a change in personnel, we have a change in policy, and all of a sudden, we're on a whole new roadmap. And we believe that a strategic plan that is created, not from the board, but from the community, that defines what kind of school district we want to have, that's going to tell us where we put our resources. It's going to tell us how we prioritize the resources that we have. And that's going to be critically important. That will also give us an opportunity to look at things that we might have had for a long time, but if they don't fit into the plan of where we're trying to be, there's some good things that might need to be cut because they don't take us in the direction that we need to be going in. So, again, and, and I think we need something like that that keeps us all focused, so that me as a board member, regardless of what my particular persuasion may be, it's got to be aligned with that plan. Every time we go after a grant, sometimes we go after things because they're out there, and we say, "Oh, that's great, we can bring programming in," but it distracts us from where we're supposed to be. Now, we're chasing more money to keep the program supported, and perhaps that was a good program, but it wasn't taking us in the area of academic improvement that we needed. So, there, there is an alignment between what we're doing fiscally and what we're doing strategically. And I think that's one of the ways of keeping our district solvent. We don't have just a money issue. We've got some issues around prioritization. And, you know, and I think Mr. Tucker was very clear with our intention and what his, I think, direction from the board is as it relates to administrative cuts.
On the strategic, like, two, two things that are, that are coming. I, I plan to do a state of the schools in the first of the year, but, but the strategic plan will be run by a third party, of, of which will be privately funded. I'll, I'll probably be recommending Ohio School Boards to do that, of which two-thirds of that committee will be community people, representative of everybody. We have done them here in the past, it's been, been quite a while. The other thing that I'm, that I'm also resurrecting and putting back is the Business Advisory Committee, which is the board is supposed to have. That, that committee is, is inclusive of a number of business folks in town that come in, and we explain a lot of where we're at, and then it does exactly as the title says, business advisory. I don't think it's been, I think Mr. Smith told me, '08 was the last time it was...
Mr.?
Yeah, '08.
Four years.
Four years. You, you, you need that. They need to know where we're at, and we need, we need some, some of them, and it, and it's mandated. So, there are a number of things coming from outside people, some experts in the area that, that, that I'm putting in place at the request of the board and other things that we just need to help us with those things.
If I could, can I just add to what you said about this planning? I don't, I've never actually read Alice in Wonderland, but I'm told there's a interesting part in it where there's a stranger in a strange land, and he comes to a fork in the road. Now, baseball great Woody, or Yogi Berra was once asked, "What would he do if he came to a fork in the road?" And he said, "I'd take it home." But this, because that was Yogi. So, the stranger came to a fork in the road, and he didn't know which way to go, and a person from that area was coming toward him, and he said, "Sir, may I ask you a question?" "Sure, what is it?" "What road should I take?" And the stranger said, "Well, where are you going, my friend?" Or the citizen, and the stranger said, "Well, I'm not quite sure." And then, the person said, "Well, then it really won't matter what road you take." We are, that is us. And what Mr. Williams was saying, which I agree with, and I know Mr. Tucker is going to get us there. There was a great series on History Channel about, was titled "The Men Who Made America" or "Built America." It was about all the robber barons. Well, I'll tell you right now, JP Morgan was a robber baron. But if it wasn't for JBP Morgan, there would be no Lorraine, Ohio. Because Lorraine, Ohio didn't take off until JP Morgan bought the steel plant, and we became the National Tube Division of United States Steel. But what they do, and Tim, I think you said you saw that as well, when they, those guys, Rockefeller and all the crooks, when they set a vision and a plan, they stayed with it. And if there was a bump in the road, they filled the hole and went forward. They didn't change their vision. And Tom, you know, you did that in Sandusky to some degree, am I right? And you have, I know you're, been here, what, two, two months? You been here?
Eighty days.
Aren't you glad? He's going to get it done.
Well, and these are the things, so as we're looking at this, this scenario and the direction we're going, there's a combination of things. There is, it's not just borrowing money. It's not just passing a levy. It's not just making cuts. It's putting these things in a context of a plan. It's, we have to compete for students now. We have to have marketing strategy, not, not, what do we call it, what did we say earlier, Jim? Not just public, public relations, but marketing.
Public relations are not, and marketing are different things.
And so, again, it's, it's that confidence. It's the expectations that are on Mr. Tucker in his experience in, in putting districts in the right place. So, we're not, this isn't the same as, and it may sound clichish, or it may sound like I'm backing out of it. We aren't in the same place that we were on previous loans. We can't be. We have to have a comprehensive strategic way in which we're going to address multiple issues. We've got to compete for students. We've got a customer service piece that if we don't improve, it doesn't matter if we borrow money, the state takes over, if we have bad customer service, people are going to keep leaving. And if we don't stop people from leaving, there is no loan, there is no advance that is going to address our fiscal deficit. So, there are a lot of multiple things that we need to do. No single one of them is going to address our issue. So, our confidence will not be in one thing. It will be in coming up with the right combination. And then what, what will happen is the board will make a certain decision, which will give direction to Mr. Tucker and Mr. Weber and their staff. And then we will, regardless of what our, once the majority has, has decided, we will close ranks. We will make sure that we are focused on what the plan is, and that's where we'll, we'll rally around that. So, I appreciate that we've had a healthy discussion, and we will differ on opinions, and we'll continue to differ. But because there's a difference of opinion, doesn't mean we're not committed to the same objective. And I've had conversations with clergymen, Bishop. Johnson is here this evening. We've talked. I've talked to other folks in our community. And one of the biggest things that Mr. Tucker is committed to, and when I was doing the calls on the references in Sandusky, he's committed to the community and community involvement. We will not right this ship if we try and do it alone. We will not rely on our best practices and internal wisdom of the seven folks sitting up here. We will engage the community in a significant way because we believe the solutions to our problems are within our community. And so, that's our commitment. But we're going to take some time to think and to answer questions and to ask questions of each other. We will be back before you, and I think we're going to make that decision on our next board meeting in December, in which we will conclude with the direction that we're moving in. And at that stage, it'll be all on board, full steam ahead. So, again, I appreciate the honest dialogue that we've had, and, and I appreciate the differences of opinion, and we're going to get to where we are, are, are actually supposed to get the district to.
Mr. Williams, on a related note regarding the plan, the plan is due, actually Thanksgiving date, the 22nd of November or before, okay? So, we're not going to vote on it tonight. We have to have a meeting in sometime between now and the Wednesday, the 21st, or something like that, okay? If we are going to borrow via the tax anticipation note process, levy has to get certified before we can even do anything regarding borrowing. So, we're looking at the week of December 3rd to have another meeting to get that tan process and going through the Board of Education. So, next week, we probably have to have a discussion, vote on the plan. And then, two weeks after that, if we are going to borrow versus the levy, week of December 3rd.
Okay, so let me be clear. The recovery plan is due, and this is, this requires board approval. It is due, when?
Uh, honor before November 22nd, unless I ask for a couple more day extension from Mr. Harden, which he may or may not give us. I haven't approached him on that.
Okay, what I would suggest is this, because we're going to have to have a meeting the week of December 3rd.
Yeah.
If you could check to see if we can have, until that meeting...
Yeah.
...to... -to get that to them-
Yeah.
-that would be appreciated.
Okay.
If that's the case, then we will go ahead and schedule our meeting for the week of December 3rd. If that is not, get back to us, and then we will schedule an emergency meeting. Um, but we would need to know this probably by tomorrow-
Yeah.
-because we have to have, we would love to have five board members-
Right.
-at that meeting, and because it's a special meeting, we have to give them 48 hours' notice. So, um, is that clear?
Yep.
Okay. Is that okay with you gentlemen? Mr. Smith?
Sure.
So, if you could help us with that, Mr. Weber, um, and then we can, um-
Do you remember next week's Thanksgiving-
Right.
-and their school is out, what, on the 21st?
Tuesday.
It's the last day, and that would be the-
Because we might be looking at a Saturday morning meeting.
20th, yeah.
Remind me.
I think they would just remind me, Colton, for the circumstances.
I think so. It's a reasonable request.
Yeah.
Um, with that said, thank you, gentlemen, for the conversation.
She's still-
You still there, Mitch?
Yes, ma'am.
Man, you've got great ears. I bet your ears all, man, and your battery. Did you, is your battery, is it blinking yet?
Yeah, it's got a couple minutes left.
I just want you to know, Mitch, there's someone you know in the audience listening to everything you say.
Hi, sweetie.
She's, she's smiling right now.
We checked with the, um, in the Ohio Revised Code to see if a spouse could sit in, and it wasn't allowable, Mitch, so, uh, believe me, we would have preferred that than sitting here with you on the phone, but couldn't happen. Okay, is that it? Uh, where are we at now, gentlemen? Help me, I'm lost.
Superintendent's, um-
Thank you, Mr. Weber, for your report recommendations. Uh, Mr. Tucker?
A couple of things for a report. One, uh, my staff is currently working on one, reinstating full-day kindergarten, uh, first of the year. Uh, we are, we're, we're shooting for that goal. We have to, there's a, there's a lot, it, it, it's easier to do it when you're doing it, uh, throughout the summer, but to reinstate it, you have to upset a lot of other things to make sure it happens, but we are committed to getting that back. And the high school busing, we are also working on. Uh, the other thing that, uh, that, that the public will notice, and I've, I've sent some emails to some folks who, who have complained about our website on numerous occasions, more than you can imagine. Um, it was interesting when I was looking to return and possibly find information. It was difficult to find things. Come January, we are switching over to a different, uh, uh, format, and it will be a work in progress, but it, the, the goal is to make it easier for people to have access to our website. It will be easier to find what is going on that day, so you know what's happening. And there's a lot of other things that I'll, I'll, I'll talk about in January as far as text messages and emails and things people can sign up for if they so choose. So, you, if, if there happens to be a snow day, you'll know before the radio stations and TV stations know. So, there are some, some good things coming there as, as part of that. On, uh, personnel matters, A Personnel Matters, Item 1, approval of discontinuances. Item 2, consider of new appointments. Uh, they are sub administrators. Like I said, we've been trying to build up our substitute administrator list. Uh, approval of new appointments, a support staff, uh, two of those are subs, as you can read, two of those are personal attendants, and those are replacements for people. We have a high turnover in our personal attendance. Item 3 is, uh, approval of contract status. That's the St. Peters, we, we pay for that through Title 1 funds. It's not a general fund expense. Item 4 is consideration of the winter supplemental contracts for, for next year. Uh, those are ones that you, that you had approved. Teacher mentors are required by state. Uh, they used to pay for that. Now, they're not paid for, uh, they're paid for very little. It's one of those unfunded mandates we talk about a lot. Uh, two other ones you may notice is, uh, bowling and cheerleading. Those are donations that are going to be coming to the board from outside organizations, and when that occurs, I will, I will acknowledge those. And Item 5 is approval of supplemental discontinuances. So, I ask for approval of personnel matters, Item 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Motion to approve Items 1, 2, 5?
Support. Discussion. Roll call, please. Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Yes.
I did one, one thing. Uh, what I'm glad to see on here is a word. One starts with V, and it's called volunteer. There are people volunteering to help our children. And what a wonderful way to help kids and the general fund at the same time. I thank them.
B Operation Matters, Item 6, enter into a contract with LCCC for Parent Engagement Programming. Uh, this is a program that, uh, will, will use, that, that collects old computers, uh, gets them hooked up to the internet for parents, trains them how to access, uh, Power School for their students, and, and just works with our, our parent engagement for that. This is a Title 1 grant expenditure. Item 7 is a contract with Beach Brook for services delivered. Uh, this is part of a Gear Up and School Improvement Grant, uh, to help those students, uh, as, as part of that after-school program. Item 8, enter into a contract with Don Mastrobiano, hope I said that correctly, for services delivered. Uh, this is a Title 2A grant expenditure. This is for professional development for your social studies teacher. You have to do these, and the ODE, um, has an approved list that you can go from, and that's one of these. So, I ask for, um, approval of Operation Matters, B Items 6, 7, and 8.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. And there are three things that, um, I would just reinforce because they're words that we throw around a lot, that we're used to, but other folks might not be. One is unfunded mandate, two is general fund, the third is grant expenditure. Um, and you hear us mention those a lot, sometimes with anguish. Um, but, uh, Mr. Tucker, would you please?
General fund money is the money that, uh, that, that we get for students, and it's the money that is collected by the taxes, and, and that's the money that, that funds, that basically funds schools. That's the money that we're talking about tonight. That's the money that everybody talks about. Grant money is money that is given to the district in a number of different ways. Under Title Grant, it's called Title 1, you all, you sure, um, you've all heard Title 1, Title 2A, and those are federal, uh, dollars that are grant dollars. They're fu, they're, the money is sent to the state of Ohio, and then it's sent to us through the state. Those monies are based on the number of free and reduced lunch students that we have. It's, it's basically a poverty-type grant. And they are, and on grants, there's restrictions. You can only do so many things with grants. You have to spend so much on, uh, actually, you have to spend it on administration, you have to send, spend it on teachers, you have to spend it on professional development, and you can spend very, very little bit on supplies in it. What you cannot do with grants is what's called supplant. What that means is that the state or the federal government says that you, um, for things that you are supposed to supply, we will not give you money for. So, you can hire a lot of facilitators and academic coaches because you aren't required to have those, but you can't hire kindergarten teachers because you're expected to have those. I, I know it's crazy, but, but that's the way it works. That's one type of grant. The other type of grants are grants that we apply for, competitive grants. Those are the, 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 the fancy ones you know about is Race to the Top. You applied for those, you rewarded them, or you weren't. There is a school improvement grant that we applied for and got, and, and those grants, and, and Gear Up is also an after-school program that, that, that's a grant. Um, those total about $30 million, but you can't, you can't move that money over to pay for your deficit. And there's a lot of restrictions on those, on who can get those jobs, and, and those, and a lot of times, now, Title 1 and 2A are continual grants. You, you, you continue to get those. But these other grants, like Race to the Top, there's a timeframe on those. You get them for a certain period of time, and it ends. And when it ends, that program is gone, and those people will be gone. So, that money, you either have it, and if you don't spend it, you, you send it back. So, you either have it, or you don't have it. An unfunded mandate is, um, is something that the state says, you will do this, we're not giving you any money to do. Um, there's a lot of unfunded mandates that are coming down. Under the teacher mentoring, which we're looking at here, uh, the state came up with a program, oh, I'll bet you it's been 10, 15 years ago. Uh, it's a good idea. It's to mentor teachers in classrooms and mentor new teachers in classrooms. Uh, initially, when they did that, in fact, I was on the union side and helped negotiate the language for that. The state was reimbursing all of our, our people that had to do that, uh, to make sure that that, and it was, it was, it's pricey, it's thousands of dollars. The state was reimbursing them. Over time, the state just says, we're not reimbursing you for that anymore, but you're still required to do it. So, that money comes out of general fund. So, you, a lot of times, you say, well, what are they doing with their money? Well, a lot of times, those mandates come down, and, and you have to pay for them, you know, whether, whether you want to or not because they're required by the state. So, that's what an unfunded mandate is.
Thank you very much. We will take opportunity every now and then to maybe, um, be courteous and give you some clarification on what some of these terms that we use are. Um, at this stage, we really have no new business. I don't think one reason is it's a special meeting and if we didn't plan it, probably can't talk about it. Um, do we have any committee reports? Requests from board members?
I would just, I would just like to make a comment on, uh, on Veterans Day. Okay, while, while our veterans are here, that I personally got to witness today what, what I would say was the beginning of, of sacrifice. When I, uh, I went and watched, uh, I watched my son's deployment today to Afghanistan, but, uh, I, I sat around, I took a lot of pictures, and I watched the families, and, and I watched a lot of, uh, a lot of children that, that their, their father was going away, and I watched, uh, spouses were going away, and I seen, that, to me, that was just the beginning of sacrifice. Okay, that was the beginning of sacrifice, and we thank people every day. And, and I just had to think that what kind of, I don't know if I should call it baggage, but a soldier takes with him. He takes, he takes all that with him when he, when he leaves, and it was, uh, it was sad, and it was heart-wrenching, and, uh, people really do make sacrifices for our freedoms, and, and if, the one comment was, freedom really isn't free, and that there are people every day that are out there doing things to make sure that we, that we live in a, in a country like no others. So, I just want to say thank you.
May I, and, uh-
Please, yes.
You might have seen in the Morning Journal my letter to the editor with a poem, very appropriate. It was a poem written at the close of the First World War, and it's the reason, I think, that for many, many years, veterans groups used the poppy and the sale of poppies. And the title of the poem is, "In Flanders' Fields." And I wouldn't, if it's very short, if you don't mind. Can I recite it, sir?
Please.
"In Flanders' fields the poppies blow Between the crosses, row on row, that mark our place. And in the sky the larks still bravely singing fly Scare's heard amid the guns below. We are the dead. Short days ago we lived Felt dawn, saw sunset glow Loved and were loved. And now we lie in Flanders' fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe. To you from failing hands we throw the torch Be yours to hold it high. If ye fail us who die, we will not sleep. Though poppies grow in Flanders' fields." Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, uh, we would entertain a second hearing of the public, so if you would like, please come to the microphone here. Um, write your name and address, but please do that after you speak, so we don't have to wait while you write it.
My name is Dennis Johnson. I'm the senior pastor of Fairfield Christian Center in Lorraine, Ohio, 2002, East 28th Street. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak to this board, the superintendent, and the community. I come to, um, first also thank the young cadets for the excellent execution, um, showing the respect for the veterans that have served this country. My father was a veteran. My brother's a veteran. I am a veteran. My wife's a veteran. I have a nephew who has served two terms in Iraq, three in Afghanistan as a battlefield medic. Another nephew serving in Hawaii, and I have a son, also that's a veteran. I come also to speak on behalf of the Lorraine African-American Pastors Council. Uh, we read the article in today's paper concerning the, uh, recovery plan and the borrowing of the $3 million. And we just want to, uh, encourage the board to think long and hard before you borrow money with interest, um, where you can get the same results if we allow the state to come in and do the hard things. I have full confidence in our superintendent, Mr. Tucker, but there's, there's this, uh, a situation in, in the city that's going to have to be dealt with, and the committee, as Mr. Smith has, um, already announced, uh, made up of citizens, along with people from the state, can make those hard decisions. And you can kind of like step back and let them help you do what needs to be done, and still have that freedom to, um, be the superintendent without any type of hostile, um, atmosphere. Mr. Smith has, um, verified the numbers. He has verified them with, um, the, um, treasurer, Mr. Weber, and from looking at the numbers to pay interest on $3 million with the financial situation of the district, to me personally, along with the pastors that we have talked to, just doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense. We have a mountain in front of us. Um, Mr. Smith referred to it as a hole. Sometime you can go over the mountain, around the mountain, or you can feel the hole. I suggest that we feel the hole, let the course that has been set take place, and we keep the respect of the people, the public opinion, the favorable public opinion of the people that was shown by passing Issue 39. Um, this hall might not be filled with people, but people are watching. They're watching prayerfully and closely to see the decision that you are going to make. Do you dig another hole to fill another hole, or do you, um, be wise, not seeing that you're not wise, but make the hard decision, and let's look at not only the short-term benefits, but let's look at the long-term benefits that would allow this school district to be successful and prosperous, not just three years or four years from now, but into the next, um, um, future. So, I just wanted to say that on behalf of the Lorraine African-American Pastors Council, and also as a concerned citizen, um, talking to the people on the ground in the communities, I don't think it would be wise to borrow $3 million, pay interest on money, um, that you don't have to pay if we go into physical emergency, that money's available, and we still with time can do what needs to be done to make this district strong and viable and, and, and secure. I thank you for your time. We pray for you, um, that you, um, do what needs to be done, and we understand that you have some hard decisions to make. But also, um, remind you, and I'm quite sure you know, that the public is watching to see, um, what's going to happen. And I don't think that borrowing the money would be a wise decision. Um, we just had verification with the figures that Mr. Smith put out, verified by the, by the, um, treasurer. And it, um, Bill Clinton said, um, it just don't add up. And I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. You can just fill it out right here at the table, sir. Bishop?
Just fill it up right here. Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Brian Reinhardt. My fa, or my son was the one that did the, uh, pledge of allegiance tonight. And just like this gentleman just said just now, that the public is watching, the public has been watching of what's been taking place in the city with the schools. We sat here for an hour and seven minutes before one of you mentioned the word academics. We sat for an hour and seven minutes and talked about how you guys are going to get paid, and how everybody else is going to get paid before we said anything about academics. You, we're discussing whether or not we're going to be in academic, uh, whether we're going to be in fiscal emergency or not. We're already in academic emergency, and that's what needs to be addressed. The hemorrhaging of the students from this district- The hemorrhaging of the students from this district is in large part due to our performance academically. And I've wondered for as long as my children have been coming to school in this city, where is the disconnect with the board and the students and the parents? And it's amazing. And I see part of it tonight. Mr. Williams and everybody that sits on the right side of this table, you gentlemen are the one consistent thing that has been here in Lorain City Schools for these past years. You guys, you, Mr. Williams, you mentioned that we need to develop a strategic plan. That strategic plan should have been done a long time ago. And that's what the citizens of the city are expecting you to do and what we've been screaming for you to do for years. My two daughters both graduated from Lorain, from Admiral King. They both went to the band. We had fundraisers, we did all kinds of stuff, and what I'm about to say is probably not gonna be popular, especially being Veterans Day. I am a veteran. But Mr. Tucker mentioned the Junior ROTC about paying for it. As a parent of a student in an elementary school, I have to ask you gentlemen, how many members of the Junior ROTC are there and how many elementary students do we have? How many, what good is a, you know, first-class baseball team or a first-class football team if we cannot teach our children basic education? I sold more boxes of fruit than anybody can imagine. That's the way we funded the band. I literally had to pick up fruit in a truck because we sold so much of it to support the band. There has got to be ways where we can get the people involved to support the sporting programs, because frankly, we can no longer afford to pay for some of the things that we, that we have. The Junior ROTC is one of them. And it's, I know it's unpopular to say, but we have got to get back to the basics. We have got to get back to reading, writing, and arithmetic. And I guarantee you gentlemen, if we get out of academic emergency and continually improve academically, that the students are gonna come back and the money problems are gonna go away. Because we're gonna have the tax money, we're gonna have the students to pay for everything that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other ladies, gentlemen, would like to address us? Thank you for those who did and thank you for all of you who have been here to observe this evening. At this stage, the announcement of our next board meeting. Mr. Weber, I believe is it, is it December the 6th, which is the Thursday, the week of December 3rd?
Now what we're gonna do is the next, the board meetings are scheduled right now for December 13th and 27th. That's the 2nd and 4th. So I'll call Mr. Harden tomorrow and see about the week of December 3rd. And we can decide after that about the December board meetings or decide this evening.
That's great. So yeah, so we'll wait to hear from you. At this stage, we'll tentatively set, should we set it for that Thursday, gentlemen?
What was the date, sir?
It would be December the 6th.
What?
December the 6th.
6th?
The 6th.
Saint Nicholas Day. That's Saint Nicholas Day. Santa Claus.
Is that National Honor Society?
It's fine with me. Is that, is that all right?
I thought National Honor Society was that.
Oh. What day is that? A Wednesday, a Thursday?
It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
We could do it on, it's a special meeting anyway, so...
Yeah, it is a special meeting. We could do it at 5 o'clock. No, Mitch, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you able to be here by 5 o'clock on December the 6th?
5:30 would work better for me if possible.
Okay, that'll work. We will set the next board meeting for December the 6th, 5:00 PM. Would you like to be here or at Charleston?
Either or. Either or, I'll double-check.
Okay, double-check. We can always hear, okay? Right, 5:30? So I'm sorry, the meeting will be December 6th, 5:30, here at Frank Jacinto. If there are any changes, we will notify you appropriately. At this time, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So move?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
This has been a production of Lorain City Schools TV20 WLCS.
To purchase a high-quality copy of the program you just viewed, please call Lorain City Schools Television at 282-8400.